Before I go to the purpose of the meeting, allow me to acknowledge the senior citizens that are amongst us. And thank them for being here. And also allow me to acknowledge, I see some elders who look like traditional leaders, and I guess they are, I can see from their attire, you are most welcome. And if there are traditional healers amongst you that are present here, they are also most welcome. On behalf of the collective here, allow me to refresh your memory and say that during the fifth parliament, the Constitutional Review Committee traversed the whole country, went to all the provinces to put one question to the people of South Africa, whether or not they want to see section twenty-five of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa amended. The overwhelming majority of the people of South Africa gave Parliament a mandate to say yes, you may go ahead and amend the constitution. Excuse me, I see some traditional leaders and healers coming in, they are most welcome. I see someone who looks like a member of Parliament, I don't know if I am mistaken or he is not. On the basis of the mandate that you gave to Parliament to say yes, you want section twenty-five of the Constitution amended? Parliament constituted an ad hoc committee whose members are seated in front here from all parties. So we are before you as a multi-party committee of Parliament. To execute the mandate that you, the people, gave to Parliament. In terms of the spirit and letter of the Constitution of the Republic. We have come back to you to put another question that is different from the previous question. The question we have come to put to you now relates to the form and content of the new section twenty-five that you, the people, want to see. Because the Constitution of the Republic is based on the will of the people of South Africa as a whole, both black and white. As members of Parliament, we don't have the monopoly of wisdom to do as we like with the Constitution because it is your Constitution. We also respect the fact that you created a constitutional democracy which is both participatory and representative. Participatory democracy, representative democracy means that you elect councillors, NPLs and MPs to represent you. But that representative democracy doesn't make us cleverer than you. That's why we have come back to you in line with the participatory democrats. To say to you, the owners of the Constitution. We want to amend section twenty-five of the Constitution as mandated by yourselves. But because we don't have the monopoly of wisdom, we want you to give us a mandate on the form and content of that section twenty-five. We are happy therefore that you are here in big numbers, both black and white, traditional healer, traditional leader, young and old. And as this collective here, we regard all of you as equal and we are going to treat you as equals. And we are going to make sure that as far as possible, all of you who are going to speak are given equal time to speak. And therefore, each and every speaker is going to be given three minutes to speak. And on the floor, we have parliamentary staff. And the respect that we give to one another, to ourselves, goes to the same to the parliamentary staff. The respect. Must also go to the parliamentary staff. And there are certain responsibilities that we cannot discharge from this table. Those responsibilities are given to the parliamentary staff. So I want to appeal to all of us that let's not obstruct them in the execution of their work. We have developed an approach which will be implemented by the parliamentary staff where people that have to speak, we take ten from each side, when the ten is over, we move to the middle, and then when the ten is over, we move to the other side. I am under street instructions from the table here that when I recognize speakers, I take, for the ten people that I take, I take three in front, three in the middle, three at the back, so that we treat all of you equally and fairly, and also this is the International Year of Women and that we will be biased towards women. So if you are overlooked in favor of a woman, no, you are overlooked in favor of a sister and a mother, and you must be happy that you gave a chance to your mother and your sister. I want to test if my left hand is still stronger by starting on my left. The man with the... I have two ladies in front here, yourself and herself and that man there. Wunda Visiter, Ser Kela, Nizengapa, those chairs are reserved for the speakers. Please, let's not argue with the staff because the staff of Parliament give instructions also to us on the table because our responsibilities are different. In the middle, I see a man that I thought was a member of Parliament, yourself, I see a man in a white, I see, I hate calling people white people, but I see a white man there. As agreed by all of us, we need ten names, now I'm going to the back there, but also this is not Parliament where we have backbenchers, even those people right at the back are entitled to the same recognition, and I'm going to the, I start at the back there. You, you say, you, yes, in this side, is there anybody else? And then I'll go to the, that man in red there, yes, there's another man in white at the back, no, the one next to you. Okay, I see one hand, and I won't raise my hand on behalf of anybody, I'll recognize the hands that have been raised. Parliament staff, do we have ten? Yes, I didn't recognize him. I didn't recognize him. We thank you for your cooperation, this is the level of self-respect and respect for others that we expect of you and we are getting it, and we are grateful for that. We have agreed that everyone has three minutes, so I work under instructions from the table, when the table instructs me to say your time is over, it's not debatable, it's over, I will follow the instructions from the collective. Now we will start with the first speaker, I'm not going to stand up again, I'm going to sit down, when you finish, the next one will follow, the next one will follow, thank you, when I stand, it means something is out of order, and I will stand to restore order on behalf of the collective, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chairperson, my name is Umpele Mthaloha, I'm from Watidi Tidju, Tswane Municipalite, in 2018, Parliament was here and made submission, we told you to go and change the law so that we can expropriate land without compensation, why are you here? Because you are wasting taxpayers' money. Since you are here, this is our submission, section twenty-five of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa must be amended to read as follows, number one, the state including Parliament, Executive and Judiciary carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equally equitably redistribute all resources, number two, property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general applicant or a public purpose or in the public interest, remove section three and replace with, the state should be custodian of South Africans' natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources, water and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define contextualize state custodianship of natural resources, thank you.
Let me just make an appeal, that lady was making an input that we value, and we want to hear her, let's keep our silence so that all speakers are properly heard because we are also recording, we don't want to mislead Parliament by hearing things that have not been said.
Thank you Chairperson, I'm Constance Monali from ward fifty-five, in 2018, Parliament was here and we made submission, we told you to go and change the law so that we can expropriate land without compensation, why are you here? Because you are wasting taxpayers' money, three, since you are here, this is our submission, section twenty-five of the Constitution must be amended to read as follows, number one, the state including Parliament, Executive and Judiciary carry an obligation to redress imbalance of the pass-through enactment of law that will achieve redress and equitably redistribute all resources, two, property may be expropriated without compensation in terms of law, general application or public purpose in the public interest, remove section three and replace with, the state should be custodian of South Africa's natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water, the relevant legislation should be passed to clearly and define and contextualize state custodianship of general resources, thank you.
My name is Nambo Tabelo, I'm the Chairperson of, my name is Nambo Tabelo, I'm the Chairperson of a support for life which has more interest on youth development, one is that in order to realize the non-racial and equal South Africa, we believe that that would be realized only if we can only create a sustainable solution, and what is a sustainable solution? For us to realize the goal of non-racial South Africa is about ensuring that we realize the social and economic justice and that can only be done by amending section twenty-five of the Constitution, therefore, this thing is low overdue, we are saying to you the portfolio committee, we are going to ensure that this thing becomes amended because this is the only instrument that will ensure that our people have access to an economic instrument, land to access young black South Africans is an instrument of ensuring that we realize our own financial and economic freedom, two is that, I was amped at twenty years old, I've never lived under apartheid, but now I can tell that I'm feeling the effect of apartheid, we have no access to financial, to finding, due to, we do not have access to, I mean, we do not have title deeds, but the other mandate I want to give to this particular portfolio committee is that we must go and look into issue of mixed ownership, we are saying no, 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 to nationalization of land, and no, 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 that the state should be the only custodian of land, must also into look into how chiefs can also become the custodian of land, therefore, mixed ownership of this particular land is very much important, go and amend, we are saying yes, amend section twenty-five of the Constitution, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, my name is Lawrence, I'm Lawrence Matitella, I'm from ward seventy-five in Amangskrat, it's very unfortunate, comrade, that even today you are coming back because the mandate previously in 2008 it was clear, so we are surprised you are back here, and in our own opinion, you are just wasting our own money, and please, let me make it clear and make a clear submission to you, we want to make sure that the land is brought back to the poor masses of this country, to the marginalized masses of this country, this is my submission to you, the state including Parliament, Executives and Judiciary carry an obligation to redress the imbalance of the pass-through enactment of the law that will achieve the redress and equitability and redistribution of all resources, number two, the property may be expropriated without compensation, A, only in terms of the law of general application, B, or a public purpose or public interest, remove section three and replace with, the state should be the custodian of South Africans' natural resources including the land, the mineral resources, water, relevant legislation should be passed to clear, to clearly define and contextualize the state custodianship of natural resources, and it must be clear, we want government to be the custodian, this thing of title deed must be removed, we want government to be the custodian of this process, thank you very much.
The state is wasting taxpayers' money, and it seems like the government is buying time so that the corrupt politician can grab the land, telling unoccupied, because in Maobani it's happening so, while you are busy telling us that you are making public consultation, and at the same time, the buildings, they are abandoned, they are busy demolishing it there, and then while you are busy expropriating...
And then while you are busy expropriating, busy trying to expropriate the buildings, you will be wasting another money to rebuild those buildings such as stadiums and hospitals and schools that are busy demolished by the community members. So I'm saying we are expecting a commitment and a date for the party looks preparing over to Maboban. I personally am saying, eh...
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Aaron Strutz. I am from Afri Forum and I was sent here by the spirit of Jan van Ribbich today, who gave us instructions to come and inform you why we are opposing expropriation without compensation. Mr. Chairperson, we do know, and I believe you know and the panel sitting there in front knows, that land reform is a political ploy. We do know that virtually every opinion survey that has been done about this have found that the majority of people in South Africa do not support this. We do know that during the previous process where there was public input, hundreds of thousands of peoples, the submissions were thrown out. We do know that the majority of people who file land claims file their claims for urban areas, not for rural land. And we do know that more than 90% of people who file land claims indicate that they actually don't want the land, they actually want the money. So why is this such a big deal then? It's a big deal because government is failing and everyone can see that government is failing and government needs to do something to withdraw the attention from governments' own failures by creating this massive spectacle regarding expropriation without compensation at the expense of the ruling party and the other parties who support this, its own voters. Mr. Chairperson, there's not a single political party in this country that is as efficient and as well organized as the Economic Freedom Fighters. So we want to applaud them for their efforts in organizing themselves to be here today. It's a party that has 10% support, but it's now... It's a small party, but it's dictating the agenda and the ruling party are falling in line with the demands of the Economic Freedom Fighters. And it's an inspiration to all of us, even those of us who disagree with their policies. There's just one problem. So we see these Economic Freedom Fighters and the ANC fighting capitalism and fighting, you know, property rights and so forth. There's just one big problem that some of these members who are here today have and that is that enjoy the fruits of capitalism too much. If you really enjoy the fruits of capitalism, you must be very careful to chop down the tree. Because if you chop down a tree, you can eat the fruit, but you have to eat it very quickly before it becomes stale and then there's no fruit left. So there's a saying that there's one difference between a capitalist and a communist. The difference is this, for those who don't know. A communist is someone who reads Karl Marx and a capitalist is someone who understands Karl Marx, Mr. Chairperson. That is why we know that expropriation without compensation will be disastrous for the economy. And we believe you know that as well. We believe there are many people here who read Karl Marx and who understand Karl Marx and who knows that this would be bad, but you still push this because they believe that it's in their political interest to do so. Lastly, Mr. Chairperson, we're not here to convince you on what should be done, on whether the constitution should be changed. I'm concluding because we know that you have already decided that it is going to get changed. So therefore, last sentence, Mr. Chairperson. Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to conclude. So we will not... We will see you in court. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson.
I'm sorry. You could see... You could all see that the people in this hall are self-respecting. They respect speakers. Let's not provoke them. When your time is over, it's over and then you must just quit. Sit.
Tovela, Chair. Gweda, gomese nyeru. Gweda, sir. I'm the president of Agri Houghtain, who is affiliated with Agri SI. Our members in Houghtain is members from white and black communities from Winterfeld to the north, up to the east and Bronkospray to the south. And I can tell you, it is not necessary for us to amend the constitution because everywhere I go and our organization go, black and white format.
Please, if there's something that is out of order by me or anyone, raise your hand and say order. So that I beg to order, but don't cause disorder because I cause disorder. Call me to order when I'm out of order and I assume that I'm not out of order. Therefore, can we all listen to the speakers? Can we all listen to the speakers? Because the parliament gave us a mandate to listen to all South Africans, both black and white. They are entitled to speak to their parliament. Proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I think many speakers is totally correct to say that we're wasting time. While the politicians is talking about expropriation, we as agricultural sector in the country is working feverishly to feed the nation. And I can tell you, with us, there's no color. It's not a black farmer or a white farmer. We're working together. We've got many projects in Winterfeld. We've got a cattle project running, a lot of cattle farmers who is joining us and providing some meat as well as sheep. And we can go down to the western side of Houghtain, we get vegetable farmers. So yes, I also think that we're wasting time by the talks and talks about the constitution because it's already happening. The farmers in this country is already farming and they say, listen, we do as what our South Africans can do the best. And that is to do relationship building. We're not fighting over small trivial things. We are working together. We are working hand in hand. We are sharing knowledge and we are sharing some training. We think it is not necessary to amend the constitution or to change the constitution because it's also a problem when farmers cannot have security on their land availability because banks won't lend their money, they won't borrow for the farmers so that we can expand on that and that's a big problem for us. So if we can, if we can keep it like this, I think then we can have also job security. So for us from agricultural side, Chair, please make a note. For us, it's important to work together with other South Africans. We're farming, we feed the people and we are really into it to build relationships and help other farmers to farm properly. Thank you, Chair.
I would like to thank the committee, the Chairperson, for giving me this opportunity. My name is Puyum Xhongo. I'm based in Wat 20, Maboban, Nkopano. This issue of section 25 is a very personal issue and very emotional issue. If you recall what happened particularly in the 1913 Land Act, which was passed. If you recall what happened, that land act was orchestrated to segregate black people from their own land, from their own resources. And then for the committee today to lag behind on this matter or to... I don't know if they are buying time or what. It's very, very, very emotionally hitting because we expect... We are feeling the pain of apartheid, but we were never members of apartheid. We don't know what was black power or anything. We are trying to live in a South Africa which they said it is a free democratic country. We are trying to integrate even today, but we are at disadvantage. My white partner, my at the same age, my peer, has all the resources at disadvantage. How am I going to compete with them? And the land issue is a very stumbling block, the same stumbling block which makes the economy for us not to be integrated in it because it is still the same issue. And I'm still amazed, why still white people? I haven't seen any white person coming forward, feeling guilty about that, showing remorse, saying, you know what, we know what your forefathers, we know what our forefathers did to you. So by that, we don't want the legacy of apartheid just take over. I really don't know why. Why is it so hard for you? Why is it so hard for a white person to admit the wrongs of the past? And so that we can carry on building a nice future for all of us, not in a world where you are all dominating, all of you, you are only dominating. White person is only dominating in our land. How? I don't know. I would be shameful if I was white and if I was opposing this amendment, I would be ashamed. The Afri Forum, what do you call yourself? I don't know in which interest are you speaking this? But you are not speaking in the interest of black South Africans. You are speaking on your own selfish interest. And then that's very demonic and evil spirit. That is the forces of the spirit of evilness.
What you...
I don't know.
Speak into, speak into the mic.
No.
We want to record.
I'm sorry, Chairperson.
We want to record your voice, speak into the mic so that everything that you say is recorded.
This is very emotional, you know? Because our forefathers have died, but they are not recorded in the history of books, but they have died for this land, they have shed blood for this land. But even today, we are exploited. We went to colleges which are ruled by them. The education system is theirs, they rule everything. But even though we follow suit, we can't be integrated. Why is it so difficult for the parliament and for the white people to accept? And stop opposing this. I will thank you.
Tovela. Eh, lofi, uwalisavana. I'm from Wat 2 in Tswani, in particular in Pretoria North. Before I relate to what other speakers have said, I want to say that I'm a member of the EFF, a proud member, and I preach the gospel of land expropriation without compensation for equal redistribution and use. Now, organizationally, I want to say that as the movement was saying, le siniya chale, dwa kala. We were here in 2018, we have listened to you. We came and made our contributions. On what basis are you here? In summary, I want to say to you, reinar le skawasarantso. Arena internet access. The majority of the people who are here do not have access to the internet and you must not be fooled by what you receive through emails and... I should say again, do not be fooled by the status that you get from few white families and those who support the issue of land that we should not get it back by the regisha internet as it is that they are made, the correct status are what we have given you in 2018 when you had came to us personally and we are continuing to do it now. I want to say to you, as I'm about to conclude my contribution on the three minutes given, that as a member of the EFF, as a member of the South African society, as a black person whose parents were dispossessed, my contribution to you is that the section 25 of the constitution must be amended. We are saying to you subsection three must be replaced. Thank you. We are saying to you again, as you have said in 2018, as the EFF, that the state including the parliament, the executive, the judiciary carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equally redistribute all resources, redistribute all the resources. Secondly, the property may be expropriated without compensation. A, only in terms of the law of general application. B, or a public purpose or in the public interest. Remove subsection three and replace it with the following. The state should be a custodian of South Africa's natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. I want to say to the Afri Forum, you have got the nerve to even follow us.
Our, our, our.
Let me withdraw. I want to say...
Our, 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 our. With respect, with respect, you made your good points. Return to your seat with respect.
Agalewa. Baromuso awotu, maluwajinj. You are going to come back for the victory. Hey, Dumela. Ya giwila nambo.
We value all the inputs. I will therefore repeat that speak into the mic so that your valuable inputs are duly recorded. Otherwise, you will waste your own time and waste the time of parliament. Sorry, sorry. Okay. You know, people have an opportunity to say what is in their heart. Let's not be impatient. Allow him to express what is in his heart, please. Thank you. Oh, translation, please.
Good afternoon.
Translation, please, let's hear.
He has a very serious...
He has a very serious content. He's so worried about his brothers and sisters who are working and then they work for them, they put on their jacket, their green jacket. But then the salary that they get really is nothing to write home about. So, he is giving you the responsibility to go and think about it in parliament. Because as it is, even you members, you come here in luxury cars, whereas our sisters don't have anything. So, go back and look into it thoroughly so. Thank you very much.
The founding father, the founding father of our republic, President Nelson Rolika Lamandela, may his soul rest in peace, taught us that in South Africa, we don't want foreigners to help us solve our problems. Both black and white, we will solve our problems. And that's what we are busy doing now. And I'm happy that you give the same respect and hearing to all speakers regardless of their color. Thank you very much. Eh, we are done with this row. We are coming to the, this middle row. And in terms of the instructions from the collective here, I'm going to take three hands in front and three hands in the middle and three hands at the back. Eh, I'm going to start with you. Yes. And I'll go back to you. And this man with, yourself, yes. Eh, we have agreed. Eh, the table has agreed with all of you that we are going to take ten people at a time. And we have taken three from the front row. Now we are going to the middle row. Eh, there is that gentleman holding a phone, yourself, yes. And then there is the man holding a cap, yourself. Eh, there is a senior citizen there, yourself, the lady, yes. No, yeah, that lady. Eh, now I'm going right at the back, with your permission. There's a man in a white shirt. There is a lady there with a, the man, you, you, no, no, no. That person with a white hand. The white paper and a cap. The white paper and a cap. If you don't recognize yourself, how am I going to help you? Or, oh no, they say you have come. Eh, how many people do we have? Eh, with your permission, we agreed that we'll take people in front, in the middle and at the back. Now, I see a lady right on top there. Eh, that lady in red, right at the top. We said we don't have backbenchers here. So even people right at the back are entitled to speak. Eh, we have ten, ten speakers. And the parliamentary staff that are there, they have more powers than me. If they tell you not to do anything, you have to listen to them. They have more powers than me. So, let's begin, proceed.
Thank you very much. I am Kobilem Somu from Watu, Rui, Pretoria West. Eh, Chairperson.
Sorry, just to say, we, we respect your rights to speak to your members. But today, we request that you speak to us because we are sent by parliament to listen to you. We want to hear everything that you want to say. And please speak into the mic, so that we don't misrepresent you when we go back to parliament. Thank you.
Eh, thank you very much, Dr. Muthewa. I am Kobilem Somu from Watu, Rui, Pretoria West. In 2018, parliament was here, convinced us that you're wrong because you like visiting taxpayers' money, you are back here. But, because we know that you are scared of the descendants of Janvan Ribek who came in 1652 in a boat with mirrors and spoons. But we're here to tell them that we're going to take back our land. They can take their spoons and mirrors. Since you are here, let us give you our submission. We want section 25 of the constitution of the Republic of South Africa to be amended and read as follows. One, the state including parliament, the executive, judiciary and obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws achieve redress and equitably redistribute all resources. Second, property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. Then we want section 3 to be removed and replaced with the following words. The state should be custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water, and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. That's what one. Go back to parliament, amend section 25. Stop being scared of these descendants of Janvan Ribek. Tell them that they were passing gold to Mozambique to collect spice. We want our land, they can take their mirrors and spoons. Just go and amend it accordingly, as we have given our input today. Thank you.
Because the thing, na kupu akulobonse yonah, member of parliament. Na kupu yiturikarli di, parliament are kili na lirida. Kumu ma ba banale ni ploto, o Ukraine ni. Banale ni plate, kumu Dubai. Banale ma fazi kuru, o England. If ever kunal mule, o unambo de. Then rega allow those people, but also bodies. But you know those black people are ooni. Oka ya go India, oka se krimutomutso are, that's my, that's my plot. Oka se go Ukraine, wa kremutomutso are, ken nambo. So that, the so body sake, lisa zipla, lisa twanaku negotiate. You just have a person on a link ploto, e kulu, wa motore muna, ruxia lonan kuya ha, kawa na laura. So that, eh, na da eh, freshara amongst blacks. So that, in tawuraitu rene rete, morro seka tuiwa, nebele tui tui. Kuya kan na personal, because this thing, na kiti, if a dile, around dile, the whole South Africa yar na, each and every black person are reyaka le fazi. So that, the halibusetamrau. Li wusetamrau, kataba tawatara, liso la kwan keli ya kadi investment, ene li vesta kala fazi. Halit sa chaladetabon. It's gonna be difficult to hold a national fazi le. Lili febatwa ba tukar, ba la ba ra, ha kuku fazi le de. Um payi, mutaruskawa, kala fazi la South Africa, we na keta muniaka. Those people bakas krisi. Ora ba tuaha. Enali jigamule na li ya go rena riwe kasi rena. Please, guys. Iran 21, it's a man, no, amend that. Section 25, let's go to the little more, na li muzen ta, liri wudita rfe ni. Lere na, if ever li ya go hori. Ma, 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 wale zonariplegit. No, this is a boy in England, they're looking, they're kauli le. This is, o Ukraine, they're kauli le, they're larka, repa 21. Because onano lewa lema kuwa. Local kantula tuala ya go Ukraine, la ya German, la ya tuta bo. Ke habu no, renaro ya me. Arri kerelele, Africa SOO. Repelala, na li thuga Africa mara, halit ta tarama kundla. Aba yewe, bapa te, rela ti moha. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Mr. Masiten. Eh, please amend section 25. Eh, we are sad with the reality that people from Ukraine, Dubai and England own pieces of land in our country. You cannot go to Ukraine and England and to claim a piece of land. And in my knowledge, this matter of the land has long been exhausted. We have already concluded this issue. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering why we are still gathering here talking about the same matter. And this, this issue of the land is causing the people of South Africa to fight amongst themselves. Eh, or maybe, why don't you just take us to Ukraine and cut us a, a piece of land? And let's see if it's gonna be possible, thank you.
Hello. Hey, guys. I'm the, eh, Pretoria, Pretoria West, 29, and then 21. In 2018, parliament was here and we made submission. We told you to go and change the law so that you can expropriate land without compensation. Why are you here? Because you are wasting taxpayers' money. Step three, since you are here, this is our submission. Section 25 of constitution must be amended to read as follows. Number one, the state including parliament, executive and judiciary carry and obligate to redress imbalances of past through enactment of the law that will achieve redress and equitably distribute all resources. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation. A, only, only in terms of law of general application. B, or a public purpose or in the public interest. Remove section 3 and replace with the state should be custodian of South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water, and relevant legislation should be passed, should be passed to clearly define the contextualized state custodianship of natural resources. Thank you.
My name is Calvin Maheru. I'm from clause 2, section A, at Watu. Eh, arlebele, kela ala. There's one person we don't see here. Minister Begitane, because we are going to deal with the stolen property. Because his department said, 2027, the person who buys a stolen goods is as guilty as the one, the criminal, who stole the goods. So, today, I would just like to submit this. Since you are here, this is our submission. Section 25 of the constitution must be amended to read, to read and, as to read the following. The state includes parliament, executive and judiciary carry and obligate to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of law that will achieve redress and equitably distribute all resources. South African history, evolution, the colonial times, up until the end of apartheid, was characterized by the matter factor. The subjugation of black people through coercive and other violence means central of the colonial and apartheid project of black subjugation was a concept, conceited program of land deposition from black people. So, kubala babora, let's go. Ruisneja, abela, warapifa. Don't come back again. This is the last time. Because people, we are going to be fed up. Those who are angry with us when we say section 25 must be amended, we say to them, we will change their name now. They are angry forums. The angry forums must go back to Australia. Thank you.
Eh, thank you very much, Chairperson. Eh, my name is Piwen Mbajotin. I'm from Watu, 29, Ososhamu. Eh, I came here with the common expression of supporting the motion of the EFF, as a member of the EFF. And it is quite important as well to say, this is a historical mission that has been abandoned by the liberation movement. It has been taken by the younger generation. Second of all is that, this is not the, this is not the first time where the state expropriates its resources. It has been done to mineral resources. And now we are about to make our submission as well. In form, we are saying, number one, the state including parliament, the executive, the judiciary carries an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws to protect the people who were dispossessed. Two, we are saying, property amendment must be exproted, expropriated as follows, only in terms of law of general application. B, it must be done so for the purpose of public interest. Therefore, you must remove section 3 and say the state should be the custodian of South African natural resources. The air above it and the sea around it and the minerals below. It must go back to the hands of the people. Thank you very much.
Ah, assalamualaikum. Mina, yimuchago. Yimuchago aga di na. Sokulmea kuya ema di lochi. Kuya ema di lochi. Mina, lumza noche. Benkala khas kaka, krisfresha. Ime diya, mukukumusi, the begwat. In 2007, in the, in the conference of the, of the province. Itole ye, 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 ye land. As in the economy.
Eh, sorry.
Itole ye land.
She has, sorry. She has the same right to be heard like all of us. Please listen to her. And those who control the mic, make sure that the mic is positioned well so that we can capture what she's saying. so that we can capture what she's saying.
Into le yendo le yelelent. Uchi makutatwa ilema pani wethuwa kasa. Yaka la kula yokonfrent. En ikala huweye uchulasmanika. Asesa i president, ye ayensi youthnik. So yini into enzi ma ayenza. I government yet. I chulebe opasisha imitey chulebe. Ye mama. Lawa ah 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 into zafana statozi so akubu yingledi kubu kubu mostakutekse. Tinasale sana ne. Sia trela kunina government kutpasisa ne sekinle kuluyanga. Manikuya, nikuya nendo eh epatega. Waba konama jatpatanga into epatega. Sian trela waba is overdu into ekalago two thousand and seven ekala i ayensi youthnik. Anda malema. Asesa i president, na namshadjutzi. Tinasuzushu. Waba gasta tateno. Isinda uku ma xrasfante. Aba zalibetu. Luwa ma famas. Ban ezingu lube, ban ingo. Koto asatola ngaduto. Zatato yuo ama bo. Lawa namshade. Siba koto uko kodo, siba kenea silekswashaya eshonda. Seskatela yuo es trela wutina ye into futi yelelent. Sitela wutin o government yet. Magayagela rusevisa ama lente. Waba siphe ama lente, ilente belongs to all South Africans. Mas pe ni ilente swazuksebeza, swazukkombisa i afrofora. Lento le kuluma yelo fandera slambalaza. Sian trela beraslambalaza as trela wutin. Mas yoka tinsaka, sese basiyati zile before they dry. As fun of a process, we need our land. We want to cultivate our land in a good process for food security, to create jobs. Sian trela mankuya. Nina ama plaza government. Umaswala una ama plaza. Yani siwa. Why don't give to people the land? Aba tu mas farm. Sese the security food. Waba nabona konama jinani yange. Ama plaza ashe la kweziwa next. Sian trela yaka ani ukunenga ama bo. Yaka no ukunenga ama bo azo kuluma the way. Uchi usasa kasi kukupuka sasa gene. Gene, gene agriculture. Sia yasi agriculture and sa etanda ne ecosystem yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chapperson. My name is Togon. I'm from Melodi in Region Five. This issue, oh, I would like to take you back on the conference that was held in two thousand and seven. In that way, I'm just trying to refresh your memory.
Sorry.
The land issue was discussed then.
Excuse me. We, the younger generation, were privileged to be at school to understand the English. We have senior citizens who were not equally privileged. Let's listen to the interpretation so that they also can hear what is going on in this hall. Thank you very much, proceed.
Thank you. In that conference, the issue of land was revived by Julius Malema. So, I am of the opinion that the land should be given back to people without any compensation. I requested to amend section twenty-five. Also, I just wanted to remind the people, dispossessed us our land. Our parents had land, it was dispossessed by the whites. Our parents had pigs and cattle, but today they don't have anything. I therefore request the government to give us land so that we'll be able to plough and make life out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Maisha Malema from what fifty-six. In twenty-eighteen, parliament was here. And we made submission to you as parliament. And told you, oh, and change the law so that we can expropriate, we can expropriate land without compensation. Why are you here today? Because you are wasting taxpayers' money. Step number three, since you are here, this is our submission as the EFF. Section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended to read as follows. Number one, the state including parliament, executive and judiciary carry and obligated to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress equitably, equitably redistribute all resources. It can't be that in South Africa, eighty percent of the land is owned by the minority whites who are still controlling us today. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation. Only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose in the public interest. And remove section three and replace it with, with the state should be custodian of South African natural resources. Inclusive of land, mineral resources and water and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Francois said that each generation out of obscurity must determine its mission. It's either they betray it or they fulfill it. We're gonna fulfill our mission to, 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 to redress and give back our people the land. Thank you.
I'm Thomas Moni from what ninety, Ososhambo. Chapperson, I don't know why you are wasting our time. I don't know why you are claiming for a finish. You want our land back. You have a capacity to amend section twenty-five. Our land, our stolen land without section twenty-five. And we are going to take our land without section twenty-five. We live without the constitution. You want our land back. These people, did it die for this sharing? Why are you doing sharing today? That's why people, did it go to the co- co-star and tell them that, can you please share land? They stole our land. You want our land now, and you are going to take it now.
Mshad. Order, please, let's listen to the speakers. Let's listen to the speakers.
Mshad, I'm Benisa Bahulbari. I'm from Hareli, I learned that the man kept my name. But the separate person is not going to tell the other fellow. But the decision is the final. I'm sure she got it. So it's not going to be a failure, it's a change. Yes, she was able to change section twenty-five, section three must be changed. And the separate one will not know before the other one will know. It will change. The first, I could tell you, because she was a little bit more about it. I'm surprised. But, you can more about it, I'm hoping, if it's a good thing, she was a little bit. And he could better than that. The first, I could tell us, she was. We need to plan our rights and call. Because that's the best place to play, so I'm very good. I'm glad I'm living, I'm glad you're fair. The future generation, the future generation, it's like. Yeah, but I do utilize the first, or a grand first, which is a good thing. Then I go, I want that technology, it changes. So, it's not about houses. The agriculture, the businesses. More than our people, we need to plan for our land, the rights and call. The first, I could tell you, because she was a little bit more about it. But more the first, this is a good thing. All the first, if we're a child, I'm probably very good. That's the last one, because if we cannot use the land in a proper way. Gausan, the first, I want the first, I want agriculture. So, anything that we need land for, we need to plan for it, for rights and call. Because if it's a plan, really, you are not planning the law. It's a regret, I guess. So, if you want to get a lot, the first, as long as you can, I'm willing, I want. But I'm very surprised, I want.
Thank you very much, my name is Steve Sambo from Social Group, what ninety. Greetings. I, I hope that you are here for the last time. And I would like to let you know that our stance has not changed. We are saying expropriate the land without compensation. And one other important thing is that we need to plan for this, for this land. So that when we get it, we know what we are gonna do with it. We, we should not only plan to, we should not only think about property development. We need to also think about agriculture and and when we get the land, we should use, we should use, we should use it in a, in a good way. We, we should really not forget about agriculture, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ineo Moyana from Woodporti in Melodi in Swan. In twenty-eighteen, parliament was here and we made submission. We told you to go and change the law so that we can expropriate land without compensation. Why are you here? Why are you here? Because you are wasting taxpayers' money. Since you are here, this is our submission. Section twenty-five of the constitution must be amended to read as follows. The state including parliament, executive and judiciary carry and obligated to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitably redistribute all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation. Only in terms of law of general applications or a public purpose or in a public interest. Remove section three and replace with, the state should be custodian of South Africans' natural resources. Inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. I thank you.
I want to place it on record that white people came here in proportionally big numbers. They sat amongst you and apparently they were accompanying some of their speakers. After their speakers had spoken, they have left. And I want to thank you for the respect that you gave to everybody, black and white. So, we proceed with our work in the orderly way that we started. Now we are moving to this side. And with your permission, with your permission, I must plead guilty to certain bias. I see Wundabe Zita and the traditional healers. They are equal citizens of South Africa. So, I'm going to give the two of them. And then there's a lady at the corner there. We agreed that women must be given special recognition. So, I'm just implementing your decision. And you also agreed with us. That will take three hands in front, three in the middle, three at the back. So, I am, I am not doing anything that we have not all agreed. So, I'm done with the front row by agreement. I'm moving to that lady in a red shirt, the one who is waving. And that man, that man with yourself, with yes, yourself, yeah. Let me repeat, let me repeat the rules. Let me repeat the rules. The rules, the rules, the rules that I am implementing are agreed by this multi-party. We have, this is a sitting of parliament. This is a sitting of parliament. And we don't want the parliamentary security to take you out. We, this is a sitting of parliament. Please, I'm moving to the middle there. We need how many? I, I see, I see a senior citizen, this lady here. And there's this man with a greenish, no, 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 the one with you, yourself, yeah. Let me remind you, I am not a dictator. The table here is a multi-party table. They give me instructions. And also, you gave us instructions. So, anything that I do here is by agreement by the table and by agreement between us and yourselves. So, no dictator. I don't have dictatorial powers. Now we have ten, we have ten names. And Nelson Mandela taught us that we are your servant. We will never insult you, but if by mistake you insult us, we will ignore the insults and carry on with our work. Thank you very much, yes. One name showed, okay. The man with a grin, yourself, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm, I'm told there are ten people. No, I'm told one outstanding. And I said that the parliamentary staff have more powers than me. Yeah, so I listen to them, we must all listen to them. I'm told there are eleven people on the queue. Please, let's not, you are wonderfully, wonderfully self-respecting. Let's continue on that note. And the greatest respect must go to the parliamentary staff who are very orderly, who are not harassing anybody. And their word is final. Please, proceed. Ndamesit, proceed. Excuse me, I'm excusing myself. My colleague here will continue with the same powers that you gave me. Please listen to her. Please, listen to her.
Uh, greetings. My name is, uh, GS Sikukuni. Uh, uh, there is something that I want to tell you about Mohali City. King Sikukuni, there's something that he has put in that area. And there is something that he has put in, uh, Benina. And there's something that he has put in Mutimule and Moshalete. That is why you are always fighting in the land of Sikukuni. Uh, the great ones said I should tell you. If you do not, if you do not let me tell you, you, you will continue fighting. And even in Mohali City, that piece of land belonged to Sikukuni. He has put something there. The land belongs to our, to my great, to my four bears. And I want to tell you now that I will, we, I will expropriate the land without you telling me how and when to do it. And the settlers who came in 1952, uh, in 1652, uh, ran, they were chased away by Sikukuni. I am leader. Even in my absence, if, when, when I'm dead, there will be other leaders. Thank you very much. Uh, I will, I will, um, say away to, I will, yeah! Uh, it's October, Wuti. La, Pango, sixteen fifty-two. Uh, Wujanfandi, we, Nga Figa, Eka. Beanga, Rapata, Luu. Beanga, Patanga, Luu. Manje, Mespa, Wuti, Ikavamendi, Eto. Iwuisel, Umshaba, Emakosi. Goba, Ischaba, Sagazi, Asinazi. And it's, Gelya, Mo, Gustavo, Kulu, Sianba, Wuti, Nendole, Ni, Anze, Mokcheja. Goba, Aroko, Goba, Ischaba, Set. Panange, Abandran, Abagazi, Abananda, Wuti, Shab. So, Kamamendi, Mo, Gustavo, Kulu, Sianba, Wuti, Ni, Wuisel, Umshaba, Bobo, Kokomete. Abo, Kokomete, Ba, 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 Ulela, Umshaba. Ni, Kombo, Sabo, Baba, Sakamba. Si, Kamba, Ge, 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 Spoon. Ge, Goba, Na, 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 Amakri. So, Manje, Umshaba, Lo, Asukolotimuu. So, Ngibao, Ngangre, Galama, Kama. Iti, Umshaba, Au, Biel, Eba, Luini. It's Okshala, Pasi, Nga, Bisketamlozi. Gia, Torosa, Ni, Gia, Kabamba, Wuti. Jango, Wasé, Abandran, Abagazi, Musa, Bakulumile. Gia, Kabamba, Wuti, Ni, Suile. Sma, Wuti, Nbi, Ele, Mova, Ni, Bathe, Ele, Wuti, Umshaba, Si, Au, Fun. Gia, Torosa. Uh, thank you very much. Greetings. Uh, let the land be returned to the people. In nineteen, in, in sixteen fifty-two, when Janvan Rebec arrived here on a boat, he didn't have a piece of land in the boat. The land should be returned to the rightful owners. The land, the land should be returned to the traditional leaders. Our children do not have homes. And, uh, you, you will remember that when the white man, the white man came to this land, he made us butter kettle for spoons. Uh, and I would like to thank the committee for coming. And we're saying, go back and make sure that we get our land back. Thank you very much.
Eh, Jumelang, Palamende, Jumelang, Vanavarantu. Eh, my name is Morin from Valmansdal. When I'm talking about Valmansdal, I'm talking about the bone of the contention. Valmansdal, iti etwe, wo, tatemukulu, Waro, Na. So, Maburu, heba fetutia, Valmansdal. Enta, Demantela, Awawa. Barifa, Barreclaima, Back, Your Land. Reclaimile, Back, Land, Yarona. Raisewa, From Pillar to Post. Barinyaka, Say, Listen. Rasi, Yet, Zadi, Tototetene, Ni, Diwatle, Haradi, Yeti. So then now, our land, itiaki, my black brother and sister. How do I feel? I cannot go to my place. We cannot go to our places because the land is being taken. A, A, Ka, 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 Wa, Ka, Wo, Awisarona, Lebo, Lebo, Awitarona. I'm saying this, Parliament, Kuhelang, Hore, Luesa. Because you're supposed to protect that restituted land. When you say, this is your Valmansdal. Kan, Ka, Ira, Yabo, Minister, Lulutlimwan. Akhava, DiKovu, Arivita, Es, Vanavamu. Then you promise us that, let, Retawua, Rira, This and that and that. Because we are the law-abiding citizens. We listen to everything what you have said. But now, it comes to us as a thought. Radkabiwa, our land is being taken by our old brothers and sisters. It is your problem. I don't blame them because you are so much ignorant. Our leaders, stop being so ignorant. We want that land back. We are not focusing, Mohoreng, we want a residential. We just wanna, eh, build some things. Ureba, Tweta, Misewe, Tse, Ureba, Navabu, Rona, Babereke. Not even, Rona, Reonang Land, even outsiders. Ureba, Konokrap, Barre, Barre, Baide. We are not focused, Muntwe, Ewanifela, Yahu, Eh, We Must, Eh, Residential, Occupy, Eland. Roger, Eh, Eh, If, Occupy, Eland, It, Like, Rite, Rite, Kamu, Ri. Omulomung, Our Owner, That Piece, Nyanai, Eland. Most of our people, that's what it tightly did. But this is all, the land is, is gone. So, Rona, Parliament, as I'm saying right now. The man, Lu, Elevena, This, Section Twenty-Five. Hore, Mohong, Pi, Ah, Obata, Mohong, La, Ah, Obatena. Then, and if, Rna, Kamkona, Lingma, Tata, Kate. Come to us, it's been long, Rinthero, Welletza. Come and assist Valmansdal before the bloodshed. Now the bloodshed, Diwilete. I don't know, Or, Ke, E, Sese, Habesel, Se, Mete. Dahor, Bralwa, Nakasurona, Kabana, Rona, Kasurun. Of which, I cannot, I can't, Toaka, Hem, Kalwata, Toaka. And I, Ki, Wanuruna, Limata. I'll stay back, so, Rona, Es, The Leaders, Kinalimata. What are you doing? Please, go and tell your, eh, seniors, Alona. Come to Valmansdal.
Time up. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, after we reclaimed our piece of land back, now we have got new enemies. We are no longer fighting the, the previous occupants of the land. Now we are fighting our, our, our fellow blacks. Uh, please, uh, stop making us fight amongst ourselves. And, uh, in the, in the era of Minister Lulutlimwan, we received countless promises. Uh, but then now, today, uh, we are in a situation whereby our fellow black brothers and sisters are, are occupying our, our, our land. I actually do not blame them. Uh, I blame you as our leaders. You are the ones who were supposed to have intervened and make sure that this does not happen. Uh, what, all we want to do with that piece of land, we want to, to make business. We want to create employment so that our fellow brothers and sisters can have employment. Uh, because now, uh, the situation is that people are situated with title deeds without, uh, their land parcels. Yeah, and, and one other thing, if you have challenges, uh, resolving this, this issue of the land, please do not hesitate, eh, coming back, eh, to us. Uh, please help assist the people of Valmaransdal. Thank you.
Eh, Mzinesala, Yikosi, Uskosa. Olinenge, Lechanguti, Lobkosi, Bagabosi, Kamshaa. Bo, Wafi, Igah, Makange, La, E, Trasfa, Lakundetinandre, Asome. La, Baye, Radfante, Ni, Emtange. Angulvinu, Yabo, Eighteen, Angulvinu, Yabo, Tetinandre. Wa, Mova, La, Baye, Radfante, Ni, Wa, Zoxoma, La, E, Volorbo. La, Sitiwapiyaman, Emtino, Mkuu. Laksa, Ke, Kisakona, Namshaje, Wuti, Ulele, Yikosi, Umuu. Yikosi, Umuu, Si, Ge, Yavel, Eto, Skosa. Yavel, Eto, Mapen. Yavel, Eto, Masham. Yavel, Eto, Mhuadu. Yavel, Eta, Ujog. Yavel, Eta, U, 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 Pavu. Yavel, Eta, Amakombi. Yavel, Eta, Menuanava, Isefen. No, Manu, Ga, Yala, Pe, Konotbo. Lo, Yumutilu, Yau, Oto, Wa, Be, Ta, Muti. Watila, Kunfiderela, Kona, Wa, Ki, Ama, Wu, Isefen. Manje, Ge, Sek, Kuluma, Wuti, Unomla, Nu, Ofili, Wewo. Es, Samilewo, Wuti, Spalelu, State President, Wuti, State President. Akuse, Ke, Sokunubinu, Elo, Umshaga, Nise, Amakosi, La, Omman, Revell. Wuyas, Spalewo, State President, Se, Kumnyaga, Wusli. Manje, Ge, Angfunu, Ke, Na, Kulu, La, Wuti. Ki, Funa, Umuu, Ya, Eh, Nendra, Beni. Ye, Nasinka, Ya, Yo, Yokchukululu, Mte, To, Wen, Nah. La, Es, Obla, De, Africa. Go, Nyago, Kapam, Go, Pe, Lego, Sukunubekulu. Endra, Wenle, E, Mizwa, Wuti, Inra, Baye, Tswani. Angkona, La. Enera, Angkaska, No, Undulobu, Kamba, Giari, La, Pe, Pitore. No, Man, Ki, So, Namshaje, Mar, Gatin, Ka, Funu, Kuie, La, Ki, Bonet, Gatin, Kfuna, Neti. Ugwenza, Umkay. Enki, Tokos, Ka, Kulu, Ni, Na, E, Vela, E, Palamende. Aw, Kyantoko, Sa, Ki, Zmeteli, Sanga. Em, Pati, Ngowesuka, Na, Sukana, Wa. Ukutinibe, Umo, Ya, Bu, Nye, Sin, Tumele, Palamende. Ukutinkame, Ne, Upa, Mi, Space, Ye, Ebon, Pa, Mi, Space. Ye, Gatin, Toki, Wem, Na, Ki, Sokpa, Mukala, Wuti, Agra. Ya, Kone, Manje, Se, Si, Awonake, Wuti, Uzo, Xii, Wa, Kay. Abanula, Mama, Chala, Es, Kfuna, Go, Ki. Baba, Ma, Nura, Machas, Una, Wuti, Mkuni, Sukon. Goba, Si, Ayasi, Aparteit. Tina, Sukulele, Ki, Aparteit. Enera, Re, Aparteit, Ayu, Swain. Goba, Sa, Si, Wuti, Zopel. Sa, Si, Utenye, De, Eni, Ro, Emtange, Iska, Tsayo, Si, Afika, Si, Zule. Manje, Namshaje, Yogo, Vanalo, Tse.
Greetings in the name of economic freedom in our lifetime. My name is Lidjua Masidela from Watov, Tswane. Leg Act was abated originally where Africans' family possibly removed from their land by abated government. What makes it worse, in 2018, Parliament was here. We made a submission. We told you to go and change the law so that we can expropriate land without compensation. As usual, you are here to waste taxpayers' money. Furthermore, it must be noted that you totally rejected EFF Six Percent offer for land expropriation the governing government, ANC and TA. Let me address you. Here is our submission. Section Twenty-Five of the Constitution must be amended to read as follows. The state, including Parliament, Executive and Judiciary, carry an obligation to redress imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and equitably distribute all resources. Property must be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of general applications or a public purpose or in public interest. Remove section three and replace with, the state should be custodian of South African natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Swesasela, Si, So, Goba, Umshaba, Way, To, Amanda!
Uh, thank you, the parliamentarians, for coming here. We are very honoured for you guys to be here. Yes, because, for now, this present moment, I will compare, uh, with those two kings who talked about the sixteen fifty-two. You know, history is history. And we didn't write history. And we don't know who did history. But history is history. They told us about, eh, with Janvan Rebec and his people when they landed in Cape Town. That's where the problem started. The problem started when Janvan Rebec came here. It's so unfortunate that those African foreigner are not here. Gathle, Gathle, I will, we have talked to them. And then, we as South Africans, whatever we have to do is to unite and bring back the land to the owners of the land. Because we as blacks, especially the people on the ground, not to give about parliamentarians because I know that you are, you're owning a very huge land outside there. We are sitting in, uh, toilet houses. I can't even cough. Whenever I cough, my child is here with me. But the other parliamentarians, if you can look unto them, all of them, they're sitting in the very big houses. Whenever you can go to water drink, every floor. Now, at this present moment, uh, here at Social Movement, I am here at odd night. There is this white guy, uh, who's called Ferumeks. It's only the whole of Social Movement.
emotional as I address the question of land because I'm one of the people who are dispossessed of land. The parliament must make sure that there's a law in place that addresses the question of land. In your efforts to clean corruption, please include that question of land. Parliament, members of parliament are selling us out. Malima speaks about land, but every forum is allowed to say whatever it wants to say under your watch and you are quiet. We are saying to you, the white farmers stole our land. We want our land back. We are not going to buy our land back because it belongs to us. There is an Act Four, Act Four of eighteen nineteen that deals with corruption. Please make sure that you enforce that law.
Eh, sorry, once again, very few senior citizens are amongst us. Let's listen to her.
Samatomo, gyalu medisha. Kidumele shaba nklwolo, babo baba, yemye made, ya bulen. Babo bedi, kidumele shab, o babo mapo. Sabararu, kidumele shab, kili skoluwa na sasuku. Kili skoluwa na sasuku ni, kili mwanama se tuakomohot. Sabararu kir, neki wudi shahor, ki wudi shapalament. Hori leto taha ka e, mori na, kahori, baban marina reclaimi. Reclaimi la from, rodoan, mudi mulle, ten plus, mkhadi. Ri shua, kamo lika. Harasato ba hori ri di re e. Mubani ri nyaka hori haru tuamule fasimbo, ri tuhelle ba na babarina. Ba na ba na ba nyaka hori baruti we, samatomo. Baruti we thombo. Babo bedi baruti we kubere kaka matso abo na, giraa akir kha. Irheba thodila cheba didira njeka hori, mudi muhono arke mata ri li shesko lo luhono wulelaskuwa. Li di re kilo jeni kro shalan ndili pidis. Mubani lekanala fufala di ra e ni, mara halis na salis porju salis biyamu, oso na ve. Lekanala giraa landi, balifa yo na, lasa mara ove tam kukura na mo, ratoka diyo ja uja. Arwe landi mo, kuri neki twa ela hori, haylo hori, kanedi mamka, he, palamente iki le mori na, ito hutwella kanedi, mubani re la bisita gidipule. Harasa nyaga dipule, lorinyaga twaye kareka yeri bo na. Hori ibi derfe la lima, da henda bilu ruha kone, ruhona hulu, nertholu. Mara gla hori raba twa banali thombo, babo utu sisang, ri li eme jili na li le palament. Eh ne ne girha hadesa babeti, he, muna hori masadi, afuwa portfolio kagwa, haru mo ola aytu heti. A twa maska tala plani ahaya twa mama tu mo, keka muhoru sama nguka re kujia, harasa bilu ria ka, mubani ola ha atla, otlakasa hayse shisha. Iplani chali na le samali li di re di samali fe la fe la bo, aliwe re kisho kana gre. Wela mu ra, linemfazi, liba kucho ruko shangumi, barri.
Eh. I stand here as a grandchild of the Sikukuni Glen, but I've got a question about the fact that you've been coming here for many times. How many que, how many times will be, will you be keeping on coming here without us having the right answers? We have launched the land claim long time ago. The claims that we launched stretch from Rudan, Mudi Mulle and Ten Plus. To date, we haven't received any answer from the par, from the government. We want to leave a legacy to our children. That legacy has to be realized only if we are in possession of land. Our children must be taught how to survive, but for them to survive, they must have land and they must be able to work on the land because it is useless to give people the land if you don't capacitate them on how to work with the land. We don't need any more talks, but we need tangible actions. We would be fighting, we could be fighting for the land, but we are peaceful, we don't want to fight now. With regard to the leaders, we ask you to please play a complimentary role. If somebody has been allocated a portfolio, the time he leaves that portfolio, he must hand over to the next leader so that there should be continuity. Thank you.
Eh, kikubela utoma ka hori medisha, may bedi ma palamente, kidumele shema karifuke, kamo ka, ma roshi, kidumele shema ita pele ba mha kwa, yefneva, mha kmele ma kamo ka. Na le mitjola kaka le sawana, sofaana. Eh, kikubela utoma, kasa mission ya kama mabilu amendment ya section twenty five ya kore tijusha ya arina. Na kikubela kore tijusha ye, amendment we, utumele la hori le fasile che we, kanlelo opate lo. Ma baka, akagi amanchi, mara lama thomo thomo, le baka kore, eh, naga, yerule la ankayona, ki crime scene, naga ye iutwichwe. Wa swabisha hori ye, mi mori le babanchika muhoke, okararele le li locherutitira, okararele na, oraloka, rulalela kari locheri, kana naga ye iutwichwe. Naga isonchi che we, che we, kaya otu, ma hoa, ma hoa ba iutwiche naga ye. There's no two way about it. Oniye le ributi shana hori na, naga isonchi iepate loe na. Raboya, oba laboya le li mushola, alene le chele te, ya o provide a service, ya o yaari kolo, eh, ya o yaari petele, ya o yaari tseela. Mara le yaoyale nyaka hori rekanaga ye iutwichwe, wa maka. So, kanlelo osinaswa ka, kitla fa baban we, lebona ba, shesama fatlinga bona, kya lebona.
Greetings to everybody. I want to greet all the leaders of the political organizations and I want to recognize the EFF in our midst. I agree with the amendment of section twenty five of the constitution, but you must be cautioned to the fact that the land that you are talking about is nothing else but a crime sin. I've got many reasons that I can advance in order to back up my statement. We talk about the stolen land. We are talking about this asking unnecessary questions. The answers are simple. This is a stolen land. The government provides funds for building and developing infrastructures for the clinics, the schools and construction of roads, but now the funds are depleted. My question is, if the funds are depleted, where are we going to get the funds to buy the land that belongs to us, the land that was stolen? Please assist us. Thank you.
I greet you all. Hello? Okay. Uh, I greet you all, the people of South Africa. My name is Alan Magwati, I'm residing in Sochangove, Oath, Eighty Nine. Parliamentary to you, I don't know, I have a problem. My issue is, why are we taking so long to amend section twenty five? Since nineteen ninety six until today, it's twenty twenty, talking about the land, 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 land. Why are we taking so long? Remember, but I understand this, because of, you know the difference between the white man and the black man? A white man, when they want to do something, they just have a simple caucus and they implement. But when it comes to a black man to implement, it will take years and years. Remember now, our people here are suffering a lot economically and residentialities. They don't even have the place to stay, the place to do business because of they are black. So, I'm asking the parliamentary because of, I know you guys, we've been voting and elected you to represent us, so what you can do now, in majority rules, in majority in parliament, please amend section twenty five. Why are we wasting time? Why are we wasting time for our people? We need that land, we need the land very strongly. Please help us, we need that land. And then, I know you are coming here today because we are about to go to the local election. We'll see you again pre before the national election. You won't come again and do the implementation. So please, guys, you've been in parliament for a long time, we are begging you, we want our land back as South Africans. I thank you.
Eh, the chair has left me in charge. We will take only ten now, the last ten. So, we'll take Upu du esankho as number one. You must go in there. You as number two, yeah. Number three at the back, at the back, apo wene na head eh, nobabini za, nobabini. Ah, ntisau thala uta ta, ntisakomba two, yakomba two ndina four. I've pointed two and that two I have four. Oh, otata ababini? I've not pointed them. I've not recognized Upu Udi who's wearing a white sweat jacket or shirt and the one who's wearing a green jacket, I've not yet recognized them. The, the one who, two liter bottle, yeah. And you at the back, the cap, yes. And that is six. I'm coming to this side now. Eh, kanyelo ma mango. The green cap. And then Umaa magia gogulu, utweni kiyamshope. Usa ba gok, be, yeah. Oh, okay, fine, we'll take you. Yanga, yanga. Eh, kuya puma ge ute, goku. We said only ten. It's three minutes again. Sia xal sapans, what's good, it's three minutes. Over to you, Udi.
Numele, I'm France Malinda from Oath Twenty Seven, Kithama Sochangove, Black X. Listening to everything that's been said today, what I can add on, I think everyone has said a mouthful and thanks for saying whatever, it was nice. Eh, a white person, I don't have a problem with him, although he brought a lot of stuffs. Le corruptionary utakebona mapohwa. So, ntwekinyaku e wulela ngo hori, as South Africans, a white person came here with nothing and they, they went away with a lot of things. This is our land and they have stolen from our land, but they want us to pay for this land with they have stolen jewelries, diamonds, but we are not talking about them. But maybe if we could ask Queen Elizabeth, where is our treasures, maybe she will answer us and bring us our treasures which were in South Africa. When, when, when this country, it was only with black people, nserle shabo, living together as blacks, serensere exchangea di lokamkona rpe la kade, until a white person came. All I can say is that, kikubela hori, a white person must stay away from our country and our land. The reason why we occupy eh, this land without paying is that the government doesn't give themselves time to come to our places. Since Mangobe left us with the forum houses, that forum houses is full of twenty people inside, then we have to go and grab that land because this government is not coming to us. We are thirty in a house, there's a land there with snakes, beasts, everything there. What is there standing, just like that, but whilst we are overcrowded in the house, there's nothing we can do. We're gonna take this land, whether the government is giving it to us or not, let them kill us for it. There are many black people who have died in this jungle of Sochangove. I don't know, one oh seven and one oh six, there are a lot of dead bodies every day that are being taken from that place, coming here to the police station and stuff. But please, as the parliament, give yourself time, come to our homes and recognize the poverty which we are facing each and every day. You are living in luxury lifestyle, everything you don't know. We go in bed without food if you didn't know when a palamente and then you come with the one hundred, six hundred, what what for children, that's nothing, you don't maintain everyone. Please give us something so we can make our own industrial sites. If you go, all the industrial sites are men, a white man's place. A black person doesn't have any industrial site, everywhere where we, where you can go in South Africa, there's no industrial site which is owned by a black person. At least give us something so we can give back to our children and our great grandchildren. We don't want to tell them about Jan van Ribeck. Jan van Ribeck was a crook, uro bile shaka, we don't need him here, that's all. Thank you.
Eh, tumela ba horo, kenale fono lo, Afuncho, ita ra, ita ra kela kamo one ninety eighty, kamo pretu ra no. Oh, my God, okay. Eh, in twenty eighteen, parliament was here and we made submission. We told you to go and change the law so that we can expropriate land without compensation. Why are you here? Because you are wasting taxpayers' money. Since we are here, this is our submission. Section twenty five of the constitution must be amended to read as follows. The state including parliament, executive, eh, to rich are carry an obligation to readdress in balance of the past through the enactment of the law that will achieve the readdress and equitability, eh, distribute our, our resources. Poverty may be expropriated without compensation, only in terms of general application or public purpose in the public interest. Remove section three and replace. The state should, should be the custodian of South African natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources, water, relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and constituteize and eh, constituteize the state custodian of the natural resources. Eh, nida shikala ko ba obale fazi. Assemblee fta kmande.
Eh, Tovela, sianu naani, palamente eh, bayta pele barina. Naga twenty eighteen, I was there, Mule and hearing, but le na akalabona le. Akalabona, I didn't see you. Maybe barba wudi ze ngo hori nyakalafazi, batwa ma ile ba furana motzilinga, batika ba wulela maaka. Listen to little realitze, don't just sit in front of us and then re submita. After we submit, you can, you can beg again. Kachel de ma, ya arina. Re narisiye na akwe, re narikise, land hearing again, really wudi zorinyakalafazi la re. Let me tell you something about Badimu, vale fazi le. Liba wiza Badimu. The ancestors, that is South Africa. Kitla wulela kaba Timu, badis South Africa because they live the spirit to you. You supposed to carry that spirit again. Give us Steve Pico, give Chris Hani, give Mandela, the old ten in their grave. If the sea reina, rebeli palamente, ya utlu twa la batu, he fita kuwa e wulele maaka. Ntademo tseha, nta demo tseha, kya leboa ho wile, ntwekinyaka wulela loe na, kaba Timu bahamujaji. Basani sa pula hori na be no, wo mujaji. Gar lisere land ya re, li file mahoa, eneli na, lisaba wuza mahoa lo rwarfe land ya re. Re narikubela lerfe land ya re na, liba wuze, leba dina hatwa konkleba fauna, balituse re balivele it, re nyakalafazi la re na. Are you control agi other countries? Thank you very much, we want our land back.
I was there previously when land hearings were conducted, but I did not see you. I've got the suspicion that the people who gave, were given the mandate, misled you about our position in relation to the question of land. We need our land. Let me tell you something about the real ancestors of this land. We've got people like Steve Pico, Chris Hani and the rest. Surely, they might be turning in their graves when they listen to you misleading the people about the issue of land. We want our land. Don't come here and tell us lies about the land. I'm very grateful that you are back, Mr. Mutseha. In fact, I want to tell, I wanted to tell you to the face that we don't have rain anymore in the area of Mujaji because you sold the land to the white people and that is why at the moment, we don't have rain at all. We need to go back to the basics, to the basics. We need our land back. We are not going to be intimidated. These white people took the land back from our ancestors. We demand our land now.
Eh, anyone who has found a pair of glasses, eh, one of the community members has lost them, can you please bring them to the table, please?
Yalewa, wo, wo, wo. Someone lost a pair of glasses. Please bring them, eh, eh, we have them here. We'll bring, if you have them, bring them to the table so that we can give to the owner, please, a pair of glasses which you may have picked up. Thank you.
Yalewa program of director, yalewa program of director, underwell eh, community, LPE, eh, comrade Mutseha. Yalewa management eh, wa wu amoki comrade Tineji, waloko la mapo munisi utamo district ya twa. Ronald eh, batuba South Africa, re re, le fazi alewele kova ngimbalo na, just because maburu kakola nan, in apartheid nineteen sixty, nineteen thirty, ba le batela batwa di baruna le fazi. So, we are not compromised as a South African communist party district, re re, batu baruna ba wele keli fazi. Mara lerona tswandu re checke bi la bi la orbi for wele keli fazi eighty percent eh. Di lo terdi di la, wele fazi, di di procedure se oro di illegali na, just because most of people political party, rikena eh, party eh, wusan in the pressure, ga emotional abuse re biya batu, moblega ngelongo re, batwa di baruna tswandu ba ile agriculture, famine mode. Re re, really communist party in the district, the political party, te di tiama fazi without reason, without proper channels. Public protector eh, tswandu abono rubera kawangata ba eh, and then eh, NPA di toy, tswanda abono rubera kawangata ba eh, and Zondo commission, if ele muka to nyana hori eh, what it does go do, otlako palamente, otlakela fazi without reason eh, ba reki mukete, basna proper evidence eh. Re re, Zondo commission, inikoba checke batuba we, eneli, li li, li li, li li toy, a checke le public protector, just because le fazi tswandu le seka, procedure, le protocol. Heleka utwela kodesa one, kodesa two, kodesa three, e wundatemo tsewa le ba le moyona. Obonti tor, everything in South Africa, eh, dona proper and transparency and eh, and procedures. We know or tswandu re tiama fa, re tiama fazi mo South Africa ka eighty percent eh, re na le tete, re na le, re na le tete eh, eh, ma fazi alla green eh, seventy percent eh, or eighty percent eh, it's a regi colonel of government eh, ya wu kapitali makoa. As South African Communist Party, we are not appealing eh, di party nyana te, di nyani te, di sabotage de sera, sera ramapozo baruna eh, re zela fazi, re ahi turoka palamente ngo kuwa palamente, ba na lo mu lansa, ba mu lansa baruna, we na wile one two three, basna bu party. Re re, Communist Party, we are going to protect, enebatuela utuseta mukobani, re Communist Party, ya district, ya province, o go to protect eh, mukobani, anyakisema, new phone you fault eh, mudi party nse nyani, roko no di la kabo. Re re, le fazi re le ba ta, mara ka proper channel eh, re le sooba, re le minde eh, eh se Communist Party. Thank you.
My, my name is Comrade Tineji from the Communist Party. We are standing here to say that the land must be returned to its rightful owners. We don't compromise, we are not going back. But at the same time, we must have time to reflect as the people because we do have the ruling party or the other parties that abuse the pro, the process of occupying the land. There are people who encourage land grabs without following the proper procedures. We are submitting as the Communist Party in this district that the Zondo Commission as well as the Public Protector must step in in order to give direction with regard to this. There must be admissible procedure with regard to the issue of land restitution or people getting their land back. Mr. Mutseha, you know that you are part of Cordessa negotiations. The issue of land was addressed, but we don't see any progress. We are also aware that there are smaller parties in parliament. We know also that there are other parties that would sabotage the president during the occasion when the parliament is opening at the beginning of the year. We are cautioning on them. We are cautioning on them, we say we want our land back. Thank you.
Eh, dumela, yaudwal. Eh, kalibizo kina tabiso msaala. Uh, now my points are, I'm saying this thing here amended in section twenty-five is long over two, one. Because of eh, by changing and taking this land without compensation, here it are one thing. We are bringing back the sense of dignity to the black people because they'll be the owners of the, of the land. Because we as black people, we are the majority of South Africa, yet we own the least of the portion of the land, temo South Africa. And then another one, emwatisang is there, the farming excuse that comes here. We should not take this land because these people are paying farming tax. We need to tell them that we were farming this land long before they invented the drum. That is a batlanga yo nagam. So the fact that orbare, bonaki farmers eh, and by, 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 by taking the land from them, the hammer economy, by disabling the farmers, is fakasi. I, 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 I apply. And another thing about this thing here landing, it deflores our dream for equity. How can you say to me, I'm equal to my white counterpart where else he's got land? And now I can not claim to the land that naturally belongs to me? And we are saying, we are a rainbow nation, sitting at the end of a rainbow, expect a port of gold. That is a dream, make us say, as long as we don't deal with the faces of the land, erdulamoyon. Addressing issue, yeah, land, will address the root of economic transformation. Rather than changing the face of the managers in these big companies, that has changed the names of the owners of the land that these companies are built on. Then that is true transformation, rather than changing the face or the race of the managers in this, in this, are changing the owners of the land so that we can be the people that actually own the economy, the economy of this land. Thank you.
Eh, my name is Moses Mabala. Eh, my opening statement is that land is a God-given resource. And God has given us this land that is South Africa. When we grew up, there were places like Sofiya Town, Alexandra, Winterfell, Gugatoll, and others where our mothers and fathers and our forefathers had titled deeds. And if you look at the size of land that they, they had, it's not, i, 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 it's actually, if you look at today's eh 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 RDPs, it's nothing compared to those plots. So, the nineteen, eh, the nineteen thirteen Land Act dispossessed our forefathers of their rightful land that was God-given. And therefore, through forced removals, they dispossessed them through land eh eh, through forced removals, and therefore they took the dignity of a black person. So that our people should depend entirely on these colonialists. So, land expropriation without compensation eh, we should not even be consulting. It's only that, yes, eh, the government has to be responsible and seem to be consulting, but definitely it should have been passed without even consultation because really we have been robbed of our land. And these whites, when they took this land, they had a, 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 a plan. And they were even prepared to kill and even eh, do genocide on our people. So, really, we, we, we should not be lenient when we talk about land. That's why most of the previous speakers were so emotional when they talk about land. If you traveling from one town to another, when it says eighty kilometers to Johannesburg or eighty kilometers to Germstead, that eighty kilometers is possessed by whites. And you'll find that that eighty kilometers is only few whites that, that are occupying eighty percent of that land. But if you get, you, if you get to a black area, you only, you only get twenty eh 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 even less than, less than a kilometer, but you find about four million people there. So we are crammed into a space, and they made sure even in rural villages, when they forcefully removed our forefathers, that they took them out of their fertile land and took them to mountains as if they, 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 they were animals. So really, this thing is very emotional. And if we really eh eh took our land back, if we take our land back, if we take our land back, that will bring back the dignity.
Time is up.
Eh, dumela, eh, ke kachiso uang eh, parlamente eh, nenzare limoga twenty-eighteen, rekupile home eh, parlamente, ilore chenchela mlaoh, hori tlochonah.
Eh, let's listen to the young lion. Can we give him a hearing, please? Raise your voice.
Eh, rekupile hori eh, section twenty-five eh, eh, chenchiu eh, so that tlochonoh, expropriate land. So, ke twenty-twenty today, we are still queuing, ah, pehona mo, tlochonoh, the same thing. And rekupapa obutaw, king process, eh, kana kana, enkangnako, weba, motlamilireinki, the white paper, eh, la, if you angwen tatemulbarona, libonchunu barona, ene butu awoke titled deed. Reinki, reife ba, libafa ninkayo, na so that reinki lefazi laro na, beg, tlochussete koba tu. So, ntongueki kupanga, beke kupa parlamenten, ituwe lo, treka ma otu like, itreka like eh, Zondo Commission. Reboni Zondo Commission, the way he is an getting, and now, rekreka lo ma otu, ha peh, more, more parliament to change a section twenty-five. Sera stoka, onajekilefazi, onajerekana ra kota, ra kota manzu, adi fallen heroes. Se bilenda, ba redu, diluane, diluane la, lonalefazi, maritza hadi swadrungong, lefazi nzelitolo lo hab. So today we are here to fight, relonela di battle, taba tu ba, lebalonking, no tamile balon, balon nzelifazi, and today we are here, reloana, batla lefazi, beg. Now har tloko pa, rekupa, lerichenchile, eh, lo hab, hori, tlochonah, mendah, section twenty-five. Re, rehuluona today, re batla lefazi laro na, beg, luchukile beg obatu. And now rekupa, relega, we are in record, hori, maybe luluona, in seventies, lekachonoh, luchutla peh, mosochanguvemo, litoro jueta hori, trelopi, lialifazi, ki efli, inkile efitizishin, so that maybe luhona, tlochonoh, onka tizishin, zeridinga wya fawat, kalafazi laro. Sere emi huli kana, regalaboah.
In twenty-eighteen, you were here talking about the question of land, but now it's twenty-twenty, we are still addressing the same question. But we are appealing to you to please stop delaying the process like the Zondo Commission. We need our land now. We can talk about many things, including the quotes, about the people who fought the same course. That would be nothing. The only thing that would help us is for us to get our land back. We are fighting the same old battles without any progress. We want to say to you, we give you the mandate to convey to the people in parliament that the people need the land. If it were possible, we would agree that we give you seven days, out of which you will come back and give us an update about the progress that has been made so far. Thank you.
Eh, toweela, kubwala spes. Eh, twes, somu fogo la ngao na. Somu fogo la ngao na, hawa, skalara sogulisha wa. Sogulisha goma fua, sogulisha karei. Gowa galora, aneyu alor, lula kadi plasi, mba ba. Enema fua, ruseyakamu di plasi, ena ala bavo ni. Gowa galora, gere, gere, stiga kakuona, fua, waru supa, kasahu supa, waru riyalon. Rere, kishala ma police, ala bavo ni. Gowa galora, le sure, le sure ma, ma otu, le ma zoho, skabarakriata fazi. Gora ntoloona, rinyakalafazi, le kapile. Horu fuka, re afukutse, baka lejoo naboona. Gowa galora, kantela hori, riya gumho. Aneyu ala, leverla, gva, genni, le, le setela batwava nsu, le ba setela gulekana atasi fe. Le ba setela gulekana atasi, na, ntoyikalula kamu gulekana nsi atasi. Maraka, you setela fua, le sete mla la, fua gulekana, blekeku. Gola, nava, nara, lva, sa, asaplif, skalara sogulisha, riya oru mla oh, pase kapile, kapile, kapile. Uri, a, e, bilera, ver, sa, cholen, ya, seventies. Wa kamu gugu la ngago ni, kar, fua sa sogulisha kamu di plasi. Ena, rere, ke gwa na, ena, batira mla lo mu gulu. Gola, naru, fitakaeru, takaeru, kamu kuli koloi, hori, kitlaka, kuli, jukusala kamet, hori, kitlaka, mu di, diari. Ke liya oru ya, asaplif. Ova tiru, lula kadi plasi, te, asoko la, ala bavo ni, kakuonu di plasi, ona, goriya gani. Ala bavo ni, fua eh, arani. Bofava, wa na, bawarna, sesi, maran, ntoloona, liya oru, le ripa. Wonyani, jawani, wani, matanya na kazona. Yalokopela asaplif, ke felisi.
As it is, we are having problems with the whites who are troubling us. Most of us are living in the farmlands or in the farming areas. In most instances, the whites would be pointing at us with their guns. When we complain, the next thing they will be involving the police. We are appealing to parliament to please assist us. We need our land and we need the process to be fast tracked. We wonder why the whites are given large portion of land, whereas the black people are just given a piece of land. We are crammed in a very small space. In fact, we want to give you seven days as a turnaround time for the finalization of this eh, process where land will be appropriated, eh, expropriated without compensation. We are living in squallied conditions. Please come to our rescue. Thank you.
Eh, parlamente dumela. Eh, neke kopela. Ah, parlamente or dumela eh, section twenty-five. Aro gari, ki, ke kubana choku, chwana li group areas act. Itlo swi. Rtsene mumela, unge chwanizi. Henkali vala, hori, kana, namo kugulezi mho. Li, minister Aramutwale, knelini tawu, uhulezi mo, le, orha, lha, le fehla moteng, mana, uwile heju mo, minister Aramutwale. Bleke ela, ngao vala di plasa, zawo, na, utloha mo, narli, irli moteng, ufitlakoli leta mlela, varike te ho, e, fili alitze, ba, li, memba sa parlamenta, li alitze. So, helika, helika, chenchha mla oh, ol. Batova shu, va, kala varu tsuins, ma vitlava, ah, khulare na, mo la, wukukuare na, mo la, rinchi zew, wa lugeki pofolo. Na arte ngo, di pofolo, di go, di, di, ya, ipsi na, kana, hela, ma vitlava, wukukuare na, wa na, mo la, gawri ki, awalela, varike plasa, amut. Di plasa, je, se, ve, re, je, lisne, muta, ona, mo, zmo, kiri pofolo feela. So, nerokopela or parlamenten, arto, eh, lengu, tarangangisha, na, kamo, la, rupana, na, kame noha. Larre, reki, larre, reki, larre, reki, kera, zana, mo, meru, ngu, ngshido, uju ala pele, kialiboah.
I want to request parliament to please assist us because the question of land is like a thorn in the buttocks. We, I speak here because I was born in the same area as Dr. Mutwale. Most of the areas stretching from the warp dam has been dispossessed, has been taken away from us in order to make way for the animals. In other words, the area was used for the parks. We are complaining, but we also have a problem with the parliament members of parliament. Let us work. If we work, then everything will fall into pieces. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Desre Salapa from what fifty-five. In twenty-nineteen, the parliament was here, we made submission, we told you to go and change the law so that we can expropriate land without compensation. Why are you here? Because you're wasting taxpayers' money. Since you are here, this is our submission. Section twenty-five of the Constitution must be amended to read as follows. The state, including parliament, executive, judiciary, and obligation to redress imbalance of the past rule enactment of law that will achieve redress and equitably distribute all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation, only in terms of law of general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. Remove section there and replace with. The state should be custodian of South Africans' natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resource, and water. And relevant religious legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Thank you.
Eh, kutiwake, there is no translator, es, kosa. Eh, ngelishwa, and is bamba, ngesni language. Teta golo asimsu, ngelolu itu. We really appreciate all those who came to this public hearing today, even those who left, who would like you, those that are here, extend this word of gratitude to them. As we have indicated so, we were here in twenty-eighteen, but when we were here, we were seeking, we were seeking a nod from you, whether to amend or not to amend. And you told us, indoba, you must amend. What we are here now, we want the context and the text, indoba, how do we amend? And you have told us, so we are taking all your contributions. As you can see, some of the cameras that are here, are not from e, media houses, they are from the parliament, they are recording all what has been said. And we have e, team apa, ye officials from the parliament, that is also recording everything that we are saying. Nisitra, zeleka ku, le, idio yokuba, which sub-section, in section twenty-five, we must change with what words. Siaitata geloto, siyabulela kakulu, ke contribution zenu, eh, gomso, sese u, stonor ya. Eh, si, si, ndelege, indoba, ge, kakumbi leadership, those that are MPLs, MPs, eh, to join us there. Again, kasil kuba, narupri. Sitala, ge, ni, ambeka ku, le, kiya, kiyalabucha, kiyalabucha, eh, drive safe, those that are driving, and travel safe, siyabo.